I call to order the business meeting of the Beaverton School Board on December 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I want to note that all seven board members are present here in person. And we'll start with our land acknowledgement. The Beaverton School Board would like to acknowledge that our school sits on the land of Toalatin Kalapuiya people, and we recognize we are not the first teachers and learners of this land, and that there is still a native presence here today, including the nine Oregon tribes. Land acknowledgements continue to evolve, and we will continue to consult with our local tribal partners as we consider how to honor the original stewardship of this land. We'll start now with the agenda review. Board members, if anyone wants to propose, if anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda, or pull an item out of the consent agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to request? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. We'll move on tonight to some recognitions. Tonight, we're going to hear from the Coyote Choir from Kineman Elementary, so we'll invite them to come up.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Mrs. Carolyn Langston, and I am one of the two music teachers at Kineman Elementary School. This is a small group of a very large, very awesome after-school ensemble we have called Coyote Choir. And just to give you a little bit of context, Coyote Choir started last spring, it was my first year at Kineman, and it was kind of by accident. We had a little leftover money because staffing changed, and so our principal decided to run an after-school program, and so I got a chance to start a choir, and there were 24 kids in it last spring. If you were in it last spring, could you raise your hand? Okay, so there were a few. This fall, I got to school, first question was, can we do Coyote Choir? My principal said, well, there's no money for it. And I said, well, we gotta do it anyway. So I am volunteering, and this year, we have 59 kids, and it's growing. So there's a vocal program waiting to happen at Kineman, and with your support, we can continue to make it happen. All right, so we're gonna start with a song called "Winter." Now, we can see everybody. Is that Wiccan? Yep. So that the kids can be seen. When the winter comes, we gather to dance and sing together. When the winter comes, we gather to dance our cares away. Everybody clap hands, everybody sing now. Sing a song of gladness, sing a song of joy. Winter, cold winter blows hard against the window pane, dance off the fire till springtime comes again. When the winter comes, we gather to dance and sing together. When the winter comes, we gather to dance our cares away. When the winter comes, we gather to dance our cares away. Everybody clap hands, everybody sing now. Sing a song of gladness, sing a song of joy. Winter, cold winter blows hard against the window pane, dance off the fire till springtime comes again. I failed to mention that this is a group of third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they come after school, and they have to arrange for their own transportation home as well. And this is a title-owned school, that's a big deal, that's a big commitment. Do we have time for one more? Oh, yay! Yay! Winter fantasy. When we get to something you know, feel free to sing along, okay? You might know what I'm talking about, okay? A-B-A-B, A-B-B-A. You know what I mean. One, two, you go. Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Crashing through the snow in one open sleigh, all the gypsies go, laughing all the way. Ha, 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 just a little play, taking care inside. A bunny is invited, singing sleighs all tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. A bunny is invited, one open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. A bunny is invited, one open sleigh, hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Crashing through the snow in one open sleigh, all the gypsies go, laughing all the way. Ha, 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 just a little play, taking care inside. A bunny is invited, singing sleighs all tonight. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. A bunny is invited, one open sleigh, hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, never touching down. Tears and ice still in the air, telling us that winter's really near. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here. Grab your sleigh and let our happy cheer, because it's flowing, flowing all over town. Hey, it's really, 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 hey!
A senior at Beaverton High School have both been awarded a Beat the Odds Scholarship from Stand with Children. The Beat the Odds Scholarship Program was started in 2007 to emphasize the critical role that education plays in helping students meet challenges on their path to success. The program is a partnership between Stand for Children, Oregon, and the Renaissance Foundation. The award is renewable for up to four years for a total of $20,000. Kiara says discovering she had dyslexia was an aha moment for her. It made her realize that she is capable of doing anything. It makes, it just may take her a bit longer. She participates in the Health Career CTE Program and is on the Sunset High School Wrestling Team.
Thank you. And I wanted to say Kiara couldn't be here today, so, and I think you mentioned that, but now I'll hand over to Tammy, who's going to read her second.
Hi, Tatum, are you here tonight? Thank you so much for being here.
Go ahead and come on up.
You can come on up. Thank you. I just want to read a little bit about you. Tatum attributes her success in Beaverton High School's social work, to Beaverton High School's social workers, who have supported and encouraged her in her educational journey. She says the most beneficial aspects of her high school experience have been participating in the Student Voice Committee and being a peer leader in the Sources of Strength Club. Thanks for being here. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great.
I'm incredibly thankful to have received the Beat the Odds Scholarship from the Stand for Children organization. With this scholarship, I plan to pursue a degree in psychology with a minor in criminology at University of Oregon. As a student who has faced many challenges in her life, including homelessness and family addiction, being able to attend a four-year university is huge in shaping my future. I'd like to thank Beaverton School District for providing such incredible resources and staff. Without this, I don't think I would have had the support to overcome what I have. My hope is that as I move on to my life after high school, Beaverton School District will remain the same supportive and welcoming place that's made it possible for me to achieve what I have. Thank you.
Do you want to come up and get a picture with the board? And I just wanted to say that Beat the Odds Scholarship Program was started in 2007 to emphasize the critical role that education plays in helping students meet challenges on their path to success. The program is a partnership between Stand for Children, Oregon, and the Renaissance Foundation, and that award is up to, for up to four years, a total of $20,000. So, and if your family is here or any, any friends and family, they're welcome to come in.
And the third person being recognized tonight is Zoya Shaw, which board member, Sunita, will be presenting to her, to them. Zoya, would you please come up to the presenter's table and maybe sit in the middle chair there? There's a little microphone for you, too. So, Sunita?
Findly Elementary School fifth grader, Zoya Shaw, has been awarded the 2024 Oregon Kid Governor. Zoya's platform is creating mental health awareness in youth. Congratulations, Zoya. Would you like to say a few words about your platform?
Yes, please. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me today. I'm very happy to be here, and I feel honored to have this opportunity to speak with you all. I was recently elected as the 2024 Oregon Kid Governor, and I will be sworn in at the state capitol in January, and I will serve as the Oregon Kid Governor until December 2024. As some of you know already, my platform is about creating mental health awareness in kids. I'm very passionate about this cause, and I have come up with a few steps on how we could go about doing this, one of which is starting a club for kids to come and to share their feelings. When my anxiety started a few years ago, I didn't know what was happening to me, but my parents helped me identify it, and together we worked on things that would help me cope with it. I realized that the same may be happening to other kids, and they may not know, too. Also, they may not get the help I got. Mental health is hard to diagnose, since the person may look okay, or physically, or from outside, but they may be having a hard time inside their mind. So, the only way it'll be easier to identify is if the kids speak up about their feelings, and that's why I want to create awareness, so that kids know what they're experiencing has a name. My goal is that by the end of my term, kids will feel comfortable speaking up about their feelings without the fear of being judged.
We'll now move to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report.
Being a kid, I may not have all the answers, but I'm willing to learn.
We'll hand over to Dr. Balderas.
Thank you, Dr. Brie.
So, I want to take this opportunity to ask you adults if you will help me spread the
Well, I just want to talk about just our hiring, that since we've, since November 1st,
word and if you will collaborate with me, so that together we can create a change.
we've been able to hire 36, actually 37 parrot-one positions and 45 parrot-two positions, and
Thank you.
we appreciate the advocacy.
Thank you so much.
I know there's been a lot of concern and question regarding student behavior, and we've allocated approximately $9 million of additional staffing support from our district reserves
Would you come up with your parents, and we'll help you spread the word as well?
And your brother?
to help our schools, support our students and staff.
And your, and your brother, any family and friends that are here to support you?
This is a expenditure done after the budget was adopted. We will review this expenditure as we begin the budget process to work on sustainability of these positions. As a reminder, the State of Oregon provides school districts with funding to a maximum of a certain percentage, but it's never the percentage that we, the districts, really need that are funded fully. So, we're never really funded fully for, to support our kids. That's something that we continue to do. We will also be reviewing our program model for special programs with our department to ensure that we're offering the strongest support for our kids and support that's sustainable and that's needed. So, that's something that I know Dr. Cordy is working with, and the audience out there and her staff, to see what we can do to make sure that we are incredibly supportive of our kids and our faculty. Really want to thank our Human Resources Department, Susan Rodriguez and her staff, with regards to the efforts on hiring the staff after the school year began. And I want to also thank OSAA. I know that Kristi Sakman couldn't be here this evening, she has a, a meeting with her membership tonight, but to, for agreeing to allow for a short-term solution and utilizing Maxim and rallying for staffing solutions to support the hiring process. So, this is something that was agreed upon, and we appreciate that. Also, a group of superintendents met with Governor Kotek a couple of weeks ago, and I was part of that group, where she listened to our local concerns and do understand that this is just not a Beaverton issue with regards to some behavioral concerns out in, in, in public schools, but a statewide issue, but also a national issue. It's a national issue, and this is top of mind for the governor as we, she begins her own processes, trying to get ready for the 25th session, the long session. So, looking forward to continue to work with our association partners and try and have a remedy that's long-term, sustainable, that's, that, that supports our kids and supports our staff. So, that's something that we're excited about. And also, we just want to let the board know that winter break is coming the next couple of weeks, and that the districts actually shut down the last week of, of December for a much-needed break for, for our, for our staff, and wishing everybody a restful time with family and friends. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Balderas. The next tie item on our agenda is our public comment. We will start with our comments from our employee group, the BEA, with Lindsay coming up, and noting that, as Dr. Balderas said, OSEA Kristi Sakman is unable to be here today. Welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Those students are a tough act to follow. I'm just saying, if you could start letting us go first and then us.
You, you can sing, it's okay. Or maybe not, right? Go ahead, take it away.
I will decline that invitation. Good evening, Superintendent Balderas, Chair Perez, and members of the school board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. I would like to start this evening by saying thank you to all of our staff for the immense amount of time and energy that they put in each and every day to make magic happen for our students. I couldn't have planted Ms. Langston better for a perfect example of that. Thank you to our community and our families for supporting educators and helping all of our children understand the importance of community and of education. And thank you to our students for showing up as your whole selves and leaning into learning most of the time. I know that many of you have been receiving postcards from educators with stories of what is happening in BSD classrooms and schools. I hope that you receive each of those postcards as a gift of insight from folks who are doing the work with our students every day, and a welcome opportunity to read about the realities of what students and staff are navigating. The intent of these postcards is to provide concrete information to those making decisions, to offer solutions and a vision of what could be, what should be, and so that every student can belong, believe, and achieve. I'll repeat the solutions that I spoke about at the last board meeting just a couple of weeks ago. Safe learning conditions for all students and staff, including consistent supports and accountability measures for students, adjusted staffing ratios for special educators, including resource room teachers, specialized program teachers, speech-language pathologists, school psychs, as well as the paraprofessionals who support them, transparent communication about supports for students, including the pre-referral process, and special education processes and procedures. As we draw, as we draw to the close of each calendar year, I often find myself thinking, phew, that was a doozy of a year, glad we made it. And it seems like that's just the new normal, that we've grown accustomed to work and life just being hard. That is beyond frustrating, especially in a profession that serves young people in our communities. I am trying to challenge myself to find ways to make the next year better, even in small ways, so that I am not part of perpetuating that cycle of one difficult year after another. I hope that all of us in leadership can commit to that, to listening, to learning, to find ways to make things better, because we deserve it. Our students deserve it. I hope that all of you have a wonderful and restful winter break, and that we can come back in January with renewed commitment to realize and maintain the schools that our students deserve. Thanks, Hal.
Thank you, Lindsay. Hope you get a break, too. We have time on the agenda for public comments, where we hear from up to 10 community members, and tonight there are no requests to speak submitted for the meeting tonight. So, we will now move on to, in our agenda, to items for information. Our first topic is the annual comprehensive financial report presented by our Audit Committee Chair, Rob Drake, and Finance Manager, Jason Gushuro. 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 Gershur. Can you say it for me? Sorry.
Gushro.
Gushro. Thank you. So, I'll let you get started.
All right. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I am Rob Drake, and I serve as the Chair for the School District Audit Committee, and actually have served on the committee since 2009. I'm an appointed lay member and also a taxpayer living within the school district boundaries, and many moons ago was a student in the district, and two of my three children went to the Beaverton School District. State law requires that municipal corporations conduct an annual audit of the, of the school district's financial books by an independent outside auditor. The CPA firm of Grove, Mueller, and Swank conducted the audit on the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. The CPA firm has issued an unqualified, clean opinion on the school district's financial statements for the fiscal year. In addition, the district received two awards for the high quality of the document itself, the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School District Officials International. Each recognized the high quality of the financial document and the excellence in preparation. Each award has been earned for over four decades. That's not to dismiss the important meaning of the awards, but it's to point out that consistently over time, your staff has done an excellent job. And having served in a city management career for 30 years, I, I know my way around budgets and audits, and this is a high-quality document every year. The school district financial management team and staff members should be recognized for their continued excellent work handling and watching over the school district's finances. Their quality work continues and, continues annually. Thank you for your good attention, and I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions that you might have.
Let's see, Susan?
It's not a question, but it's appreciation for, first of all, for the fine work that you do, Jason, and also for the multiple years that you have chaired the Audit Committee. So, thank you very much, and I'm very proud to be part of a school district that presents such an amazing audit.
Thank you. Sunita?
Is there any other questions? I just want to thank Jason, Mike's team. I know audit is a lot of work, and you guys do, did it so well that there was no adjusting journal entries. You guys did an amazing job again. And thanks to the Audit Committee, the community members who serve on the Audit Committee for their time and their service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Justice?
Yeah, I would just want to say briefly, as someone who had the first time sitting on that committee and coming in with fresh eyes, it was detailed and clear, and the pathway even for someone learning this on the job, it was not, I felt confident in the work that you've done, so thank you.
And we definitely appreciate your guys' support on the Audit Committee, as well as the citizen members for their time and efforts in reviewing the document and being there, asking the auditors questions to keep us moving forward.
Well, thank you to our board members who are on that committee, as well as to our staff and to you both for all of this work. And the board will vote to formally accept the Act for, under the consent agenda. So, thank you so much. Our next agenda item is the monthly financial report presented by the Associate Superintendent for Business Services, Mike Schofield.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Can't say enough about how proud I am of the work that our finance and budget staff do. They, they are the driving force behind giving you such high-quality documents and getting you the information you need on a timely basis, so really proud of their work, and thank you for that. Onto the finance report. I don't have a lot to report. I, I looked back and saw that two weeks ago, when I shared with you where the finances were, the next day we were submitting documents for this round. So, no change to the financial forecast in terms of what you've looked at. I, I think, as I mentioned last meeting, there will be changes at your next meeting. We'll update, because we've gotten, a lot of our property tax collections are in, so we'll be able to make some good forecasts about that. We'll have better forecasts on where we are with staffing, some of the staffing that Dr. Balderas mentioned in terms of additions that we've made will be, so, so you'll see updates in January, both to the revenue and expenditure side, I'm guessing. And with that, that's all I have this evening, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is an update on the bond program presented by Chief Facilities Officer, Casey Walertich.
Thank you, Dr. Balderas, Chair Perez, members of the board. It's a pleasure to spend a few minutes with you this evening to go over a few bond updates. I wanted to just mention, as I come into the district newly, part of my goals with not only Dr. Balderas, but executive staff and the board is to really increase the amount of communication that you folks are seeing with the bond updates, not only from the BAC reports, but our weekly updates that you should be receiving in your board packets, quarterly, I'm going to call it a brief presentation, like I am this evening, that we'll see, and then also reporting out through our BAC and, and some other updates throughout the year. So, thank you for, for listening. Really, the purpose of tonight is to give the board just some brief updates on some of our key projects that are coming up, also some updates on some of our other bond program goals. So, we'll just get right into it. Here, also throughout some of the presentation, there are a few renderings of some of the projects. Also, please feel free to interrupt and ask questions at the time. This is really for you and your time to ask any questions that I can answer, and if I don't have them this evening, I will certainly get them. So, the first group of projects that I really want to update is our two main projects that are, are moving along rapidly as we start the, the bidding process, and actually the projects work, the good stuff to work here towards the early spring and this summer. A couple of highlights, starting with the Beaverton High School project, as we continue the design of the building and finalizing that, I want, I'm just going to highlight a couple, the stakeholder meetings. One of the things that I've been super impressed with as I came into the district was to learn the history of how the design of BHS came to be. And just to highlight a couple of things, you know, going into the first phase of gathering stakeholder feedback, there were over 110 meetings where stakeholders had the opportunity to come and provide examples. That could be staff, different student groups, community groups, as that design was, was coming up and to get to where it is today. The second phase of that has been as we really work specifically to make sure the programming of the design fits the needs of the school. So, there have been over 28 different stakeholder group meetings, student groups, staff groups, that have met to refine some of the programming into the building, as recently as November into December and January, as we get to that finish line of the design, so we can start bidding. So, I just wanted to highlight, I've been super impressed coming in, the amount of engagement, not only that the architect had, but the, the bond project team, as, as well as others that have, have really listened to what the community wants in this new high school. You don't get to build a, a new high school very often, so it's, I'm, I'm really pleased with where we are in the process and the amount of input that has been gathered. Another update, you'll see here coming up in February is the big date with our, our GMP price that will come to the board for review. I just want to report that that work is going very well. I, I'm very pleased with where we will be at the end of that and the contract terms. So, we're looking to, to wrap that up here, so that you guys can be presented with that contract in February at the budget that we've allocated for that. So, a lot of work has gone into that, and I just wanted to report that that's progressing nicely. Tonight, speaking of the BHS project, you will see in your agenda, the, part of the Merle Davies work is set to begin earlier than we have that GMP. Not out of the ordinary to make that happen, it's just, once that timeline starts, we got to get that work done, and, and so you will review that early work agreement to start that work.
So, GMP?
Guaranteed maximum price. Sorry, yes, yep. So, that's the maximum price. That's kind of our guarantee that the work will get done in the price that we have allocated. And so, yeah, that Merle Davies work will begin shortly, and so we've been working really hard with all the logistics of that and working with school staff. So, that's the update where we are with Beaverton High School. Question?
Tammy?
So, with Beaverton High School being in such an urban area, the upside is, it's access to public transportation and that sort of thing for our kids to get there. Downside is there's not a lot of parking, especially in this rebuild or new, new construction. Is there any thought to, thinking about how our kids and staff get to Beaverton? Are we building in biking options, working with the city at all to have, you know, safe bikes, bike routes to school, provide places for kids to lock their bikes up, shower facilities, working with TriMet to see if, like, oh, we can get more, you know, TriMet buses coming, you know, in our direction? So, I didn't know if, what kinds of thoughts were in place there.
Yeah, I have some, answers to some of that. Definitely on the Safe Routes to School program with, with our team, district-wide, has been working with the school staff. One of the priorities that we've had, knowing that we're going to bring quite a bit of people, contractors, et cetera, is trying to protect what the school has needed for parking. So, we're doing some creative things with the contractor parking to utilize some space, whether it be on the east field or even the tennis courts and, and moving tennis around a little bit. So, we try not to impede on that. All that to say that parking is a challenge there, and I know that the team has been working with the principal and their staff to make sure that they have enough student spaces and staff spaces. They feel okay about that where we are today. I will check in on, I, I don't, I'm not aware of the TriMet piece, if we've explored that, but I can certainly check into that and check in with our Safe Routes to School team about those other options, too. Another question?
Keep going.
Okay. Moving on to Raleigh Hills. Raleigh Hills is a little bit further along in the process. You guys saw the, the GMP come earlier this fall. The design is complete. We're going through the bidding phase. Just want to report that that is going really well. We're, we're really at a good time, and, and a few of the bids that we have seen have come in lower than our number, so we are hopeful that that continues to work on that project. One of the things that we are doing right now is just the logistical movement of the school and the staff to Greenway. That, that's a process that is continuing, and we'll, we'll definitely really continue to work on that as that, as the early winter. Right after the break, we'll start to get going on that, to finalize everything we need to do to make sure that it's as seamless as possible for, for that big move. That, that is a challenge, and we, we will ask staff and, and students and parents to bear with us as we go through that process, and, and that project's scheduled to get started right after school gets out in June, and really excited. Here is a, a rendering of the most up-to-date version of the exterior design, which I think the team did a really great job of honoring some of the historical features of the existing school, all the while modernizing it, and it, it will be a great facility as we go through. One of the things that I, I wanted to highlight.
We had a question for that one.
Hey, sorry, real quick. I got to visit Raleigh Hills last week and was reminded of all the, how old it is and how much beautiful woodwork there is all throughout, and just wanted to make sure that we were being as thoughtful as we can about reclaiming some of this, working with people that can, I know, my understanding is asbestos is, you know, an issue, and that might make everything have to go into the landfill. I just want to make sure that we've looked at that as carefully as possible and worked with.
Yep, there will be some. Okay. Moving on to Raleigh Hills. Raleigh Hills is a little bit further along in the process. You guys saw the GMP come earlier this fall. The design is complete. We're going through the bidding phase. Just want to report that that is going really well. We're really at a good time, and a few of the bids that we have seen have come in lower than our number, so we are hopeful that that continues to work on that project. One of the things that we are doing right now is just the logistical movement of the school and the staff to Greenway. That's a process that is continuing, and we'll definitely really continue to work on that as that, as the early winter. Right after the break, we'll start to get going on that, to finalize everything we need to do to make sure that it's as seamless as possible for that big move. That is a challenge, and we will ask staff and students and parents to bear with us as we go through that process. And that project's scheduled to get started right after school gets out in June, and really excited. Here is a rendering of the most up-to-date version of the exterior design, which I think the team did a really great job of honoring some of the historical features of the existing school, all the while modernizing it, and it will be a great facility as we go through. One of the things that I wanted to highlight...
We had a question for that one.
Hey, sorry, real quick. I got to visit Raleigh Hills last week and was reminded of all the, how old it is and how much beautiful woodwork there is all throughout, and just wanted to make sure that we were being as thoughtful as we can about reclaiming some of this, working with people that can, I know, my understanding is asbestos is, you know, an issue, and that might make everything have to go into the landfill. I just want to make sure that we've looked at that as carefully as possible and worked with...
Yep, there will be some opportunities to reclaim some things, both at all three of these, I'm going to call all three of the Merle Davies, Beaverton High, and Raleigh Hills. You know, whether it's reclaiming some bricks to be sold as keepsakes or built into something, I know we're reclaiming some of the wood specifically at Merle Davies for some artwork, and I believe that's the case also at Raleigh Hills, to be able to reclaim some of those things, those features.
Yeah, and I think it's awesome that we can reclaim as sort of memento, but also, like, we don't necessarily need to use this wood, but, you know, is there an organization that would be willing to come and haul it off and use it and reuse it in another way? Not, you know, us remembering Raleigh Hills, but somebody getting all of this gorgeous hardwood that is throughout the building?
I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And some of those pieces probably have to do with cost in moving and that kind of stuff, but I think it's great to be environmentally friendly, and I know that in the, when I listened to the Bond Accountability Committee, the report that was shared there, there's just so many different ways that they're really being thoughtful about those pieces, the environmental pieces as well. And I also wanted to thank the principals at Raleigh Hills and Greenway for all the work that they've been doing to prepare, to make it as smooth as possible on their end, and the collaboration that's happening between the staff and the planning that goes into it. So, there's like the, your staff as well also working on that transition, and then the staff at the buildings have been collaborating to the point that when we did the, when they shared their school improvement plans to us as board members, they actually were, in my, both of them were in the same session for me, so that they were talking about how they're already planning ahead for students and learning, and how that's done in collaboration. So, I think that was pretty exciting to hear.
Thank you for saying that. One of the great opportunities as we move into the construction phase of these projects is student engagement opportunities. At the last Bond Accountability Committee meeting, our general contractor for Beaverton High did a presentation for some student internships. It also turns out that the vice president of SCANSCA for our project is a BHS graduate, but this is, we've heard from a lot of contractors and their subcontractors about intern opportunities. So, I just wanted to report out to the board that specifically for Beaverton and even Raleigh Hills with our two main contractors, that there will be intern opportunities, paid intern opportunities. Certainly, that that process will be coordinated with the school and a process to do that. There's also some potential, depending on the interest according to the contractor, for some year-round opportunities. This kind of also goes in line with what our bond team has done, did this last summer, is where we had our summer interns work on various projects. They came and presented to the, I believe it was the September BAC meeting, where they work with our project team on a variety of district projects, and it was a great opportunity for them. Classroom presentations, this will be a real benefit, specifically mainly for our CTE classrooms, where we'll be able to come in and do class presentations by different trades, different aspects of the project, potentially some job site training to get students involved in this career field. Again, our contractors are certainly excited about doing this. There's a lot of job opportunities for our future. And then, some of the milestones, for our engagement milestones, you know, getting tours, getting staff engagement, community beam signing, when we're going to put a steel beam up to have signatures and those kinds of things. Right now, we just, they just wrapped up at, specifically at Beaverton High School, each contractor has a hard hat that they have to wear, and there's a sticker that represents the project. So, they did a student engagement process with the marketing team at BHS and voted on what hard hat sticker all of the contractors and subcontractors would wear at BHS. So, I know that they're just wrapping that process up. So, trying to get the school community and staff involved and students involved as this big change happens, you know, really over the next two and a half, three years at the site. So, just wanted to give a brief update on the student engagement opportunities. Here's a rendering of the new Beaverton High School. The piece on the right is looking through Farmington Road towards the corner of the school, and the image on the left is on the bus loop, the main kind of entryway into the building, what that will look like. Okay. District-wide project updates, a couple of big other buckets of the bond that make up kind of a lot of the other things that we're doing. Certainly deferred maintenance, that list is lengthy and continues to grow. Just a couple things, the main things we're going to look at is airflow and HVAC systems, our roofs, you know, all of our turf facilities. We use, the way that we get to that is through our facility condition assessments that we did pre-bond, and then we also have a capital improvement plan facilities group that we continue to look at those things. One of the things that's coming up as we get out of COVID is we ran our systems very hard and are still doing that, and a lot of those, that cut down the lifecycle, a lot of things. So, what we're seeing now is how to recapture that while we have some funding in the bond to be able to address those. So, we're working through that deferred maintenance and prioritizing those as we go. It's a goal of mine to have that more nailed down as we get through this year so we can plan out future years. Certainly, safety and security is a big portion of it. We're actually going forward with, you know, doing things like looking at, doing assessments on our PA systems for communication. We're getting ready for camera and card reader projects, line-of-sight projects, those kinds of things. Seismic is a big thing. I know that you'll see a few things on our, the way on our seismic projects is you'll see maybe two different years there. You know, it starts in '24 as a Phase 1, and then it finishes in '25. We did, we're doing this with Five Oaks and then going to move into Mountain View. The reason for that is the seismic work is really intrusive into the building, talking about taking walls down and doing footings for bracing. A lot of roofs are attached to that. Too much work to get done in one summer, so what we've tried to do is phase those projects so there's the least amount of impact on the school year, so that when staff and students come back in the fall, it's not open project still. It's just too much work with some of the scope that we're doing. The end result will be great, but that's kind of the thought behind why having to phase it over a couple of different years. Next, our technology improvement plan that we're doing. I want to say that Steve mentioned that he thought, you know, we're about the mid-'80s of percentage of staff who are really excited and not so excited. So, just a little bit update on our classroom AV phase is we have, I wrote this down just to make sure, so far, we have about 23 schools complete with the upgrade, with the scheduled completion to be done in April. So, they're moving right along and getting all those classrooms. The end result will be really great, no matter where you are teaching, or if you're a substitute, you enter into a classroom, whatever school building you're in, you'll have the same tech setup. So, there's going to be less time needed to navigate that or get help, those kinds of things. So, those are just some of the district-wide project updates that I wanted to hit real quick. Here's another rendering that we have. One of our projects coming up that we're going to start this summer is to add a gymnasium at Stoller. So, working through those design and budgeting right now, you will see this contract coming here shortly for work, but again, a really collaborative process with the school and coming up with a great facility that will be used for quite a while. One of the board goals, our equity performance goal, this is something that gets reported out to the BAC monthly, and you guys have those updates as well. So, two main goals with the business equity of the certified firms, our goal is 15%. I just added in there a couple of the months, September and October, where we are percentage-wise. Also, on our diverse workforce apprentice participation, a goal of 10%. You know, September, we were a little higher because we were still coming off of the summer work. This ebb and flows based on contractors that are actually onsite working. So, October, November is a little slower month. That'll certainly ramp up, especially once we get contractors onboard for Beaverton High and Raleigh Hills, and as we continue, this summer being one of our busiest, if not the busiest, school project summer coming up in 2024, and then that'll maintain. So, that's a goal, that's an update on just our equity performance goals. Another rendering, Westview office relocation. I know it's kind of hard to see. The image on the left is inside of the building, looking out towards the main entrance. The kind of conceptual design on the right is what the outside will look like. I think they've done a really good job with keeping the main facade of Westview and just bringing out that exterior to the pillars that are there. What this will do is ensure that we have that secure entry into the building, and to do that is some office relocation and those types of things. So, that's one of our projects coming up. I'm not going to go through all of these. I just wanted to give kind of a future project outlook, some of the main ones that are coming up as we get into the spring and summer. Certainly, there's more, but here are some highlights. I wanted to make sure that updated everybody. I know students are really interested in the bottle fillers, so that'll get kicked off this summer. And then, a couple of the, I have the seismic project and a couple of big HVAC projects. You know, the South Ridge one in particular, that's going to be a massive kind of event. Those units that go onto those roofs are going to be huge, and it will be quite the story that, I'm sure that our team will capture those videos and everybody to take a look at that. But that's a little bit of a future project outlook coming up, and that's what I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, but just wanted to give you a brief overview.
Any questions? Ugana?
Thank you for your presentation. So, my question is around this seismic upgrades. You had mentioned something about working through the summer, and then when school starts again in September, the students are ready to use the building, and I was wondering, will the work be complete within one summer? Is it going to require two summer breaks to complete the work in Five Oaks and Mountain View?
Yes. So, this past summer at Five Oaks, they did quite a bit of work that summer, and will finish this summer. And then, we will get started with summer number one at Mountain View this summer. So, for example, they'll do a lot of the interior. They'll have to, you know, do some footings inside and do all that, and then usually in the second summer is when they do a lot of the roof work, so we can get all of the up above things done in that second summer to make sure that we get those done in two summers. So, it'll be a similar process that we did at Mountain View that we are currently doing at Five Oaks.
Okay, thank you. I think, oh, Jess's?
Also on seismic upgrades, and Jess, maybe as a footnote, too, and I think, if I remember, because I remember those from when I came onboard, you ran us through all the seismic, like where we were at. Will we get a kind of update sometime later this year, just like where we are overall with those upgrades? I know some of those were some of our, like Beaverton High School, if I remember correctly, was one of the major ones that needed the work.
Yep, yeah, two worst ones, Raleigh Hills and Beaverton High, so that...
Just, I think it would be great for the community to know where that's at, so we don't lose track of that, because as other things have happened the last three years, the seismic issue, I think, has fallen off the public awareness, but I think it's good that we bring it back.
Yeah, I will continue to make sure that I continue those updates, especially when I come here, or will continue to do those updates for the seismic projects.
And maybe that graph, you know how we have the graph?
The scorecard.
The scorecard graph that shows, like, yeah, we can just kind of show that some are moving, like, and what's left. That was such a, for me, that was, it's a visual that we can, I can easily comprehend.
Yep.
And there's a lot of complex information, so maybe just updating that one might be help as a visual to the community and to...
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll go Susan and then Sunita.
I know this is far off, but I'm thinking, and it's hard to remember because I would need to see the schedule, but there are some schools that probably the next bond would be like a rebuild, and I'm wondering if those schools that are potentially rebuilds, if we, you know, if we have a bond that passed, big ifs, how that, you know, works with the seismic upgrade, like, looking at those.
Yeah, you know, we knew going into this bond that we wouldn't be able to do all of the seismic work, so, and we, our plan was to, you know, take the worst ones and do them with the plan, knowing that we're going to have more work, and hopefully, when we go out for another bond and we get, hopefully get support, that we can start to get those all down, taken care of, to where we have a full district upgraded seismically. So, I know we have a plan for that. I don't, I couldn't read it off to you now, but there has been thought in that.
Follow-up, is there a place on the website that we could find that plan, or is that something that I don't remember?
I know that I could find out on the scoring on our facilities condition assessment. That's where it's located with the seismic score, but I can do a little bit of digging and do a board update on where we are with the seismic projects going, moving forward outside of the ones that we're talking about in this bond. Yeah, there you go.
So, Shelley just mentioned that there's a timeline on the bottom of the bond page that shows when the different seismic projects will start. So, Sunita?
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. I had a question on student internships because that's really good that you guys are involving students in the whole process. So, like, how many internships do you have? How do kids find out about something like that? How is that process done?
Yeah, so, once, once we get to the point where we are starting to get ready to have contractors onsite, we will gather the information from the contractors about what kind of capacity they have to host student interns, and they will say, we can do X number or, you know, this. Then we'll work directly with the school administration to, I guess, recruit and put out there what is, what the opportunity is, rely really on the school to go through like an interview process, assuming that there may be several students interested, and then work with, you know, contractors and school staff about point of contacts and who can, what the, what the, it's going to look like schedule-wise, and to try to get who or whom those students are going to be and what trade or general contractor they're working with. So, we'll rely on the school to help quite a bit with that on promotion, and I know that our team, Gabby, for example, like with the hard hat sticker, it's a, we really have done a great job in getting feedback or interest back from the school to get that word out, certainly working with CTE classes and those kinds of things this spring.
So, a follow-up question. So, if a kid is interested in something like that, what would be his first stop point? Like, how would they know, student-wise?
Yeah, once we get ready to have the information about the process, you know, in the spring, there will be that information that'll be blasted out through the normal communication channels within the school for updates, just like there would be any other opportunity. And then from that, that's where that information will be on, here's an application, or here is an initial overview meeting of interested students that we're going to hold to gather some information gathering, and then from there, the schedule of getting that process done will be complete.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much. The last item for information is a report from the Communications and Community Involvement Department presented by Public Communications Officer Shelley Bailey Shaw. Have a good evening, Casey. Have a good evening, Casey.
Good run, run my own slide deck here. Let's see if I can multitask. Good evening. I'm Shelley Bailey Shaw. I'm the Public Communications Officer for the district. For the past four years, it's been my privilege to manage the Communications and Community Involvement Team. Tonight, I want to cover a lot of ground in a very short period of time. So I'm going to really move through this presentation. So I want you guys to buckle up and let's do this, all right? So this is the team. There are nine of us. We have a very unique role in the district in that we engage actively with every school and every department. In my written report, I highlighted some of our big accomplishments over the past year and some challenges that we faced in the new, in the near future. I'll leave it to you guys to look over that report if you haven't already. But tonight, I want to spend my time sort of walking us through just how the department communicates and engages with our stakeholders. During a recent work session, you spent some time talking about communications. And it occurred to me that four out of seven of you do not currently have children who are in the school district. And so that I think it's important for me to kind of show you what the parent and student perspective is so that we're all on the same page. So I want to start here. This is Parent Square. This is our main communication platform with families and staff. This is one way that we not only distribute information, but we tell the BSD story. Parent Square is a very powerful tool and has been a game changer in this district. As a student, a parent, a staff member, you're opted in. You don't have to do anything in order to receive Parent Square messages. And the contact information syncs with the district's information system called Synergy. So, for example, if you have indicated that you're a Korean speaker, you will get a message from your teacher, let's say, that goes out in English. It comes to you in Korean. You can respond in Korean and your teacher gets it in English. This has been like earth shaking, like this has really moved us along in trying to communicate with our non-English speaking families. So the question is, do families use Parent Square? The answer is yes. If you look at the stats that I've listed here last, from last year alone, more than a million direct messages passed through Parent Square. The system allows for us to send messages at different alert levels. And the system also allows for families to choose how they receive the message via email, text, app, or all of the above. More than half of our families have actually downloaded the app, which is really quite high. We have parent and staff how to videos on our district website. And we also offer virtual trainings every year for both parents and staff. And we recently completed trainings with our bilingual facilitators so that they too can now offer live trainings. Another place where we tell our district story is on the website. Last year, we did a refresh of the website's main page. And the question is, do people go here? So you can see by the total visits during the past school year that a lot of people go here every month. In addition to housing information from all of our schools and departments, we've created a really robust bond webpage, a website that tracks all of the spending of our, our $723 million bond that we passed in 2022. It's really meant to be an added level of transparency and accountability. Part of a successful communication strategy is meeting people where they're at. And people are on social media. That means we are on social media. We do a huge amount of storytelling on social. This is where we celebrate our students, our staff, and our schools. The percentage increases noted here are for the 2022, 23 school year compared to the previous school year. And I want you to keep in mind that we've been experiencing this kind of yearly growth since 2020, when we adopted a really aggressive social media strategy. Social media is work. It takes time and effort to gather the content for 723 Facebook posts or for 444 Instagram posts and all the rest. That Instagram number is actually low. It's an underestimate because it doesn't include our Instagram stories, of which we do a lot. Here are the numbers for X, formerly known as Twitter, and YouTube, which brings me to video. Video production is a cornerstone of our communication strategy. No school district in the state does more video than we do. And I would dare say that we are probably one of the top producers in the country. Last year, we produced 176 videos. We commit to producing at least one video per school every year, if not more. We also do a lot of work with our departments, whether it's transportation or nutrition services or HR. We do information videos about different programs and new initiatives like dual language. And during last month's work session, I know some of you asked about each of the specialized programs and you're kind of wondering, well, what does, what does that look like in the in the classroom? Well, there's a video for each of those specialized programs and it lives on the website. So if you ever want to see what those those programs look like, you can go there. Already this year, we've produced 75 new videos. And that number includes a lot of animated information videos and videos that highlight our ongoing bond work. This here is an example of our video work. This one marked National Custodian Day by introducing Lyle Talbert. He's not only the head custodian at Bonney Slope Elementary, but he is a father of eight and foster parent to 30. It's been viewed by nearly 15,000 people and has had a tremendous amount of engagement on social. So this is just kind of an example of one of the stories we tell. In addition to the district's accounts, each of our schools has both a Facebook and an Instagram account. Fifty-one of our 54 schools are actively posting right now. I'm working with the other three. They're going to get there. So if you're not following your zone schools or the district accounts, I'd really encourage you to do so. There's a lot of good stuff here. Engage BSD is our community engagement platform. When we're looking for people to give input on anything from the strategic plan tagline to bond project designs to new middle school mascots, this is where they go. There are a lot of tools on this platform, but the one that we use more of, most often is surveys. This is also a place, in addition to email and social media, where we answer community questions. And according to the vendor who we run Engage BSD through, we are, have the highest engagement rate of any public entity in the United States or Canada. So we're doing really good work here. We have a weekly community newsletter with a little over 400 subscribers. We have some work to do to boost that number. We also have a biweekly newsletter for employees. And it has an open rate of nearly 30%, which is double the industry average. We either host or help promote a lot of different district events. Some examples are the superintendent coffee chats and listening sessions, fentanyl awareness community conversation, dual language nights, option school nights, early college info sessions, college night, CTE, the list goes on and on. We primarily use Parent Square and social media to advertise. And I know a few weeks ago, you all had questions about attendance at specifically superintendent events. And I wanted to just to mention that we do publicize those on Parent Square and on social. And we do, we do so often. However, from my experience as both a parent in this district and as a journalist who covered public meetings for 20 years, I can tell you two things. Number one, parents are very busy people. And number two, they typically are not motivated to come to an event like that unless they have a concern or a complaint. So few people will just show up for the information, but we continue to let them know that those events are happening. We regularly represent the district and engage with community groups like BEF, the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce, and Beaverton Rotary. And we also have very healthy relationships with our media partners. We track all of our media placement, whether that's print, radio, or television. Last year, we had 234 placements. We also rate the sentiment of that coverage. And you'll see here that our positive or neutral coverage far outpaces our negative coverage. And given the current climate, we consider that to be a win. So that is my presentation. I think I did it in under 10 minutes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sunita and then Ugana?
Thank you so much.
Of course.
You guys do a lot of work and we know about it now. I was very impressed with your fentanyl awareness campaign that you ran last year. As you know, it's, it's an ongoing problem. So do you guys have thoughts about how you're going to maintain that or do something new so that the kids are aware of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As background, we started that campaign in 2021. We did a fake and fentanyl 2.0 this past April. So we're sort of on a two-year cycle where we emphasize the fake and fatal campaign. But that doesn't mean that we're not doing work. And specifically, teaching and learning is doing work in our classrooms. As a result of that campaign, every secondary student in the Beaverton School District receives fentanyl specific education every year. And as you know, our model is now the national standard. So the U.S. Department of Education, in addition to ODE, are using what we're doing here in Beaverton across the country.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ugana, and then Melissa?
Thank you, Shelley. I have to tell you that your videos are always engaging. They are fun and most importantly, they are very informative. So thank you for the work that you and your team are doing. So my question is, I'm impressed that each school has a social media platform of their own. So does each school have a communications person who handles their social media posts? Or does it have to come through your department?
So what we've done is identified both an administrator and usually a second staff helper at each school. I go out and train those two folks on social media. And then they support the social media in their schools. I do a lot and our team does a lot of monitoring of social media. So the first thing I do in the morning when I wake up is I grab my phone. I look at the 112 different social media accounts on my phone to see what was up overnight. And it's the last thing I look at when I go to bed. Do we catch everything? Not, you know, we can't possibly. But I have to say, since we adopted sort of a joy only strategy about two years ago, we don't see a lot of that sort of nonsense that school districts can see on social media platforms. But to answer your question, our schools are posting on their accounts. And then sometimes we take what they've posted and then we amplify it on the district's accounts.
Melissa, then Susan?
I want to echo the appreciation for the videos. They're always fun to watch. And I think it's really powerful that in the world right now that we're telling the good messages, we have so many folks who are doing amazing work. And anything we can do to amplify that, to share with our community, I think I'm so grateful, but it's an enormous amount of work. So thank you for that. And then I did have a question about Parent Square because I am one of the parents who uses it. And I didn't know if you had, do you have a system or a way to get feedback from parents to have them share some maybe challenges that they might be having as a user of the system? Is there a feedback loop that you have opportunities for parents to give you feedback?
Yeah. Sometimes there's an annual survey that goes out every year and it asks specifically about our communication platform. So we get feedback there. But I think one of the most powerful things about Parent Square is the analytics. And what I mean by that is if I'm a teacher in a classroom and I have a classroom of 25, I send out a lot of messages. And the Parent Square allows me to see whether or not my parents have not only received the message, but did they open it? And so I can look and see like, oh, you know, this particular family hasn't opened the last three messages that I've sent. I wonder if something's up. I wonder if if they know how to use this platform. And then a teacher reaches out to that family and says, do you need some extra support? And so I feel like our teachers do a really good job of catching those families who might just need a little bit of extra support.
Which I appreciate that insight from the teacher perspective. I'm just sharing because when I mentioned Parent Square amongst, on the sports line or something, there's a lot of, ooh. And so I, and it mostly has to do with finding the message and searching. So anyway, if there's folks who have suggestions, I will share them.
And we're, and I'd be happy, like, we have a involvement email. It's on the website under our department. That'd be a great place for any parent who has any feedback about Parent Square to let us know. Because one of the nice things is that Steve Langford, who was presented a couple of meetings back, serves on the board of Parent Square. And so we sort of have a little bit of an inside track that if we want to see improvements in certain areas, we we get Steve on.
I appreciate that. Would you, or could we have that email or that? I'll try to find it. And if I can't find it, I'll ask you.
Community hyphen involvement at beaverton. Dot K12 dot OR dot US.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I see a little short post on that in the future, maybe. See, have input, community dash involvement. Yeah. Not Steve Langford directly, but. Susan?
Well, first of all, I always have to compliment you and your team because you do an amazing, small team, big school district, pretty amazing. So thank you for that, Shelley. You know, it's so hard because we are such a big school district and, you know, the website improves, you know, all the time, but it is, it it's always hard to figure out where you need to go, even with all the changes you do make. So, but I do want to compliment you because it is easier. But of course, there's always challenges there. So I wanted to point that out. And the other question I have is just to be consistent because, you know, I'm not favoring one social media account or another, but Facebook and Instagram now have threads. And so it's kind of nice through Instagram to kind of, it's connected to threads. And I'm wondering if maybe we look at being holistic and, and just a suggestion, of course, use threads as opposed to Twitter as our.
As soon as our superintendent gets off Twitter, I'm getting off Twitter. So. If if Dr. Baldarris wants to move to threads, I am happy to move to threads. I'll take that offline, but yeah, I'll have a good discussion with you. And and Susan, to your point about the website, I appreciate that. I agree with you. And while we did a refresh on the main pages, what our next step is, and I mentioned it as one of our challenges, now we're getting like deep into the website and starting to like redo some of those pages. We just have thousands of pages and it's taken us some time.
But I will say, it's nice to have my laptop here. And as we're having to discussion like on the bond and even your discussion, I can go to the website and I easily found both, you know, sections pretty easily. So good. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for everything. As a parent user, I'll send some suggestions in the community dash involvement.
Feel free. I think you also have my phone number, so it's all good.
No, but just as a parent, I think, who runs Parent View? Is that you all too? Or is that instruction? Who who does Parent View?
Yeah, that's more on the instruction side.
And then Canvas?
Instruction.
Okay. Yeah, because it, as a parent, it's, I have to remember like, and some staff uses Parent View to put stuff and some uses Canva. And for, even in one school, I'm having to, I've, you know, like, some don't use Parent Square and some do and some like email and some like phone calls and some don't take phone calls within one school. So I'm always having to figure out how to connect. And I try one and if I don't hear, then I try the other. And eventually I'll figure it out, but it, sometimes that can get a little complicated. One thing about that I've noticed is too that we can't, I can only in Parent View connect with my own kids' teachers. So if you wanted to talk to their school counselor, I have to go to the website, look for what counselor, and then try to find their email, but it's not easy to find emails. So I can't like connect with the school counselor unless I call the school and tell them, I think this is the name of the person, you know, and can you connect me? I can leave a message. But through Parent View, and I might be using it wrong, but I can only connect with my own kids messaging and that's fantastic. I can, my kid's sick, I'm sorry, have the kids send him a note saying I'm sick, can I get the assignments? But unless it's one of their teachers, I can't, I can look them up, but I can't always, I can't connect them.
Yeah, and I agree with you. As a parent in this district, I often struggled a little bit with Parent View and Canvas. And, you know, with 4,000 employees, people sort of, oh, they really like this one and they like this one and they like that one. But it does make it challenging for a parent to know where to look. In terms of the counselor, I think you're correct on Parent View, it only connects with classroom teachers, not counselors.
Parent Square too, you can only connect with classroom teachers. Even though it lists all the people, I don't think I can.
All staff is on Parent Square, but I can check on that part of.
So I can follow up, but I. Yeah, so I can follow, but I think that, I've noticed that, and I think for all parents, if we're just trying to connect with somebody at the school.
Yeah.
I mean, you can always call, and then they'll connect you, but...
Or best, you can also use, we all have the same sort of email pattern, so it's first name underscore last name, and that's sometimes a workaround.
Thank you so much. I think that's all we have for tonight on that.
Thank you.
Our next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to our items for action. Our first item for action is approving the grant application for the Early Literacy Plan. Executive administrators, Dr. Josh Fritz and Robin Krboski, are available to provide more information before we vote on approval. Do I have a motion to approve the Early Literacy Plan and Grant Application?
I move that the board approve the district's plan and application for the Early Literacy Success Grant. It's a lot of words.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Susan?
I am just going to comment that I'm excited that we're moving forward with the Early Literacy Program. I'm looking forward to our students being engaged in this adventure. I look forward to using volunteers and all kinds of resources to get our students, their early ages, motivated to start reading earlier, so, and on target. So thank you for that.
Melissa?
I too want to thank the team for working on this. This was not, you, you didn't have much time, right? The legisla, it passed legislation, and then you didn't get the grant application until, you've, you've turned this around very quickly. So given the timeline, I can't imagine it's, nothing is going to be perfect right now, but given the timeline, given how small of resources really are allocated, but I appreciate the opportunity to have such great conversations, for it to be so transparent with our community. I think we have lots of folks who are really paying attention to reading and posting it early, letting folks read it. I feel like we've done a good job of sharing the information, and I'm really excited about some of the key strategies that are different than what we've done in the past, and that's to me really exciting and brave for all of us to engage in, right? Because we haven't tried it before, so, but I think it's worth it to give it a go on behalf of our students. So thank you for all of the work, and I'm kind of jumping on in there. I feel like we're taking the lead for a lot of the districts are kind of looking toward us in some ways on what, how we're doing this, so thank you.
On my end, I think, thank you so much for all the work, and I'm excited to see our student meeting improve in the support for our staff as they're trying to implement these, this new learning that they're doing in their professional development. I, one of my questions had to Dr. Balderris was around, I know that the pot of money that they're giving us is this much, the need is this much, right? So we're putting this out to, to kind of increase support for many of our kids, and there's still a need that's greater than what we were given. And so as we continue to look at SIA funding and other kinds of funding, how do we use whatever other money we can to support, to differentiate for some of our schools, whether it's our title schools that have some higher needs in their buildings, or, or other ways, you're the experts, but thinking about letting us know, how can we support you as we differentiate when we look at our finances, and where can we add a little bit to that pot, if possible, so that we can, we're able to better support the highest-need schools in our district? Seeing, oh, Melissa?
I just have one question. And because we're trying some new things with this, this is kind of stimulating an opportunity to try some new ideas, is there an opportunity for us to revisit this collectively before next year, to just get data about how are things going? What's this look like? How are we deciding with the limited resources we have, which way we're, are we going to put more money in coaching? Are we going to put more money into high-dose tutoring? How are we finding out? And I know it's such a short window, so ideas that you have for knowing how to use our resources in the best way for students?
That's a good question, and certainly, as the year unfolds, we'll be looking at all of those pieces. You have a curriculum adoption, instructional materials for language arts. There will be a budget piece with that that comes along that will also help us guide with what are our next steps with some of the components of this, the high-dose tutoring. There is a piece where we'll be looking at the data from our students to figure out where we go next. There's also work being done in the district around an assessment framework, so that we have a universal screener related to literacy for all of our students, and we have that data, so. And certainly, as we get later into the year, we'll be talking about budgets and budget priorities.
And I guess one last thing would be thinking about, knowing that we don't have high-dose tutoring for our dual-language programs, it'll, will continue to be, I saw little pockets and things in the, in the writing, just continuing to put that on the, on the backburner, you know, not in the backburner, for God's sake, but like in the conversation, I guess. Any other comments? Ugana, and then Justice?
This, this might be a silly question that should have been asked before now. Out of curiosity, what was the, I understand this is a new project. What did we have in place before now? What did we have in place for literacy plan for our students from birth? Because this goal is to enhance literacy for students from birth to third grade in the least. What did we have before now?
So we have a number of things in place. So we've obviously have a language arts adoption. It's just not, it hasn't been updated in a number of years. So part of what's happening is updating our language arts adoption that really matches more what we understand about best practice related to literacy instruction for all students. We have a number of intervention pieces that are in place. We have academic coaches at all of our elementary schools. We, this year, moved towards having something called Lexia Core 5 available at all of our elementary schools, and Lexia Power Up, which is the secondary version available at all of our 612 schools. So there are a number of pieces that are in place. This is just really allowing us to refocus on our earliest learners, because we know it matters, and we need to get our kids reading at grade level or at proficiency level by the end of third grade.
Right, just like Melissa, I do look forward to seeing data on the outcome of this project. So thank you, and good work.
Justice?
Thank you. I think, I think my first comment would be just, I think it's really important to the community that we, one, the high-dosis tutoring and are responding, you know, those with the greatest need, I'm getting access, but that this is a large issue that every level, every, everyone needs to have access to literacy, and that we're, that we're centering that at the district. I think it's going to be really important to the community that we update, you know, folks, not even so much just on like, oh, here's how much we did better, but reminding that this is a very important issue as a school district. Outcomes around education and learning is actually what we're in the business of doing. And then the other, I guess, matter is just, if there's, I know the curriculum adoption process is starting, if there is still space for community members to serve in that process or to be part of that process, that we make sure that we, you know, center that that is actually something that as a community, they have the opportunity to participate in, and don't miss the window to participate. Because I'd hate for us to get here next year, and folks are like, oh, I didn't get a chance to be involved, or I missed it. And so I really think it's important that we at this space reiterate that you as a community member may be able to serve if that's in your interests and how you can do that.
I can respond to the interest in the adoption committee. We actually posted the application for two weeks. We had 70 applications for the committee, which is really, really encouraging, and really speaks to the interest in this topic. We have five parents, family members, who will serve on that committee. And we have also very clearly stated to both staff and family members and community members who were not selected for the committee, that the meetings are open, and that they are welcome to come observe, and that the schedule is posted, the agenda will always be posted, the minutes will always be posted. So we've really encouraged people to stay involved and stay connected in that way, so.
Thank you.
Tammy?
I'm really glad the state has allocated this money for this grant. I'm really glad that we're all hands on deck for K through three, because obviously, that's the prime time to learn how to read. I just want to acknowledge that some family members in my schools have reached out and said, what about our fourth and fifth graders? And so, of course, we aren't leaving behind our fourth and fifth graders. We're still going to add resources. My understanding from talking to some elementary principals is that fourth and fifth grade teachers aren't necessarily used to teaching kids how to read, and so that's been some, a work in progress for them, but they're aware of that, and they're working on it. So there is no universe in which we are going to decide, we're starting fresh, K through three, we're going to teach to read, and everyone else is, you know, on their own. So any parents out there that are thinking that we're going to not address reading at every grade level, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We'll now take a vote. All in favor of approving the Early Literacy Grant, Early Literacy Plan and Grant Application, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Great. That passes unanimously, so thank you. Our next item is the selection, selection of Budget Committee members, presented by the Associate Superintendent for Business Services, Mike Schofield.
Thank you, Chair. Felt like a few days ago, but in, I think it was in August, that we sat down and laid out a process for you to say, here's our routine selection cycle, how we select proposed members of the Budget Committee in a timeline. We arrived at the end of that timeline, and we have two folks who have applied to be on the Budget Committee, and those names are before you, along with, I believe, their application material. And I'll take any questions you may have.
I forgot one piece. I think I have to say thank you. Do we, we do the motion first, so is there a motion to, no, right, to then have a discussion? So is that okay? Is that right? Okay. Is, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the selection Budget Committee members for Zone 1 and 2?
Thank you for putting the zones in there. So I move that the school board approve appointing the two Budget Committee members as presented for Zones 1 and 2.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I just skipped a little piece there. So any questions or comments on, on that for now? Tammy?
I was very excited to see Jessica McBride is one of the committee members. I've known her for quite some time. She's going to be fabulous, so really excited to see her doing that work.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, well then, gosh, I'm blanking on the name of our second committee. So Jessica McBride is the one.
And Brian Bean.
Brian Bean, that's right, is the second. Does anyone, well, I guess, with those two names, Jessica for Zone 1 and Brian Bean for Zone 2, does, we'll now take a vote. All in favor of approving the selection Budget Committee members, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Will you be notifying them?
We'll reach out to them and welcome them, and design some outreach around, kind of getting them started and getting them oriented as we move through the budget process.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you to all those that applied, and thank you for those that are stepping up in that way. Thank you. Our next item is Oregon School Board Association Annual Election, presented by Chief of Staff Carrie Delf. We, we need to make the motion before we start the conversation and ask questions, is that correct? Or do you present first?
So in this case, the board actually would have four actions to take in the OSBA election. So I'll just reiterate briefly that the Oregon School Boards Association has an annual election. In this fall election, there are two candidates, one for the OSBA board, one for the Legislative Policy Committee. Both of them are running unopposed, so the board can choose to either vote to support the person who is running, or vote to abstain in that vote with OSBA. And there are two resolutions on the ballot as well, and the board will vote separately on each of these resolutions. The first one, resolution one, would establish a caucus for rural school board members, and would create positions on the board and on the Legislative Policy Committee to be, to have a representative of the rural caucus there. And the second resolution would amend the bylaws for OSBA with a number of kind of housekeeping amendments and updates, and also language regarding establishing the rural caucus. The question being if the, has come up, if the rural caucus were not to go through, what happens with the language in the bylaws? All of the written materials don't address this. I did speak with OSBA staff, and they said, well, if the, if it didn't go through, that language wouldn't be put into effect. But it is, in writing, it is embedded in that language. So when the board is ready, there's no single package to vote on. It would be, need to be done in four separate motions.
So, a question, Susan?
It's an overall assessment of OSBA, the current OSBA status, because there's so much disruption at leadership at OSBA. And I don't know if we want to, if that's something appropriate to talk about, but, so the answer is no to that. Thank you.
You can talk about, I would caution, talking about speculation of what's going on, because again, it's not public. I mean, I think what's public is there's been a, there's been a change in leadership, and I think there is a, a process right now being worked out on the release of the former executive director. Okay.
Can you put your microphone?
I wasn't, I didn't really want to talk about like the actual, what's going on there in terms of internally. It's just more that, in terms of lobbying with the legislature and all of that, that was more my thinking, so I appreciate what you're saying, Gus. But I am a little concerned about the lack of steerage from the top in terms of how important OSBA has been in advocating, and particularly Jim Green, in advocating for education in our state. And so I just wanted to bring that up as, you know, something that I'm concerned about.
It might be, I would say, if we can stick to the things we're voting on today, but if what you want to share impacts one of the votes, I would speak about it during one of those four sections. And if it doesn't, we always have our comments at the end that we can just have a conversation about, because it's important for us to talk about whatever we need to talk about in this arena as well. Does that, does that answer or give you the space you need for what you wanted to say?
I think I have some comments with some of these things that are being proposed by OSBA that we're voting on, that might kind of pertain to that.
Okay, so maybe, so what I'm noticing is the first motion is, or the first one is, we're voting for OSB, there's four, OSBA candidates. The second one will be for the Legislative Policy Committee candidate. The third will be for the creation of the rural caucus, and the fourth is amendment of the laws. So maybe if we start with the first one, and at any point, if what you were trying to say fits that, then when we open that one up, just bring it up. Does that work? Okay. Okay. So the first one being OSBA, OSBA board candidates. Do I have a motion regarding the OSBA board position 16?
So I move that the board support Tristan Irvin for OSBA board position number 16.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Do I have any, anyone have any questions or comments before we, we take a vote on that one? Seeing, oh, Tammy?
I don't know Tristan. And there's a part of me that wonders, like, I want to be accountable to, you know, our community, and I'm happy to rubber stamp, and I'm also happy to say, you know, I don't know him, do I? You know, so this is where I'm a little bit uncomfortable, because I'm new, and maybe if I've been here, you know, as long as Susan, and maybe Susan doesn't know Tristan. So I don't know, you know, what our obligation is, you know. We need board members, and I'm happy that somebody has volunteered to do that work. And if, if it helps to, you know, support and validate him by voting for him, that's great. And I just wanted to express like my ambivalence about what I should do in this situation.
Yeah, so I think OSBA had put out some information on each of the candidates. Yeah, so I think OSBA had put out some information on each of the candidates, so they had sent that to each of us in our School Board emails. So it's kind of up to each person to read that stuff, not that stuff, that information, and then be ready to vote for today. There's also the option of, because you can vote yes, no, or you can abstain. So if at any point you feel uncomfortable voting yes or no, then that is another option. We don't use abstain very often, but if you, if that feels like the right thing for you, then that would be the right thing for you. Any, yes, Susan?
Just clarifying this vote right now. We're voting for this position, we're voting as an entire Board, right? So.
Yeah, it's not purpose, so it's the majority. So if somebody were to vote no on something, for each of these four, we'd still would go with majority. Any other questions on that one? Okay, so we'll now take a vote on the motion that's on the table. That would be for, to, that this Board would support Tristan Irvin for OSBA Board position sixteen. All in favor of approving this motion of the, of the OSBA Board candidate election for sixteen, please raise your right hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay. That passes unanimously. The next one we're looking at is OSBA Legislative Policy Committee candidate. Do I have a motion for that?
I move that the Board support Becky Timchuck, former Board Member at Beaverton School District, for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee position sixteen.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Um, Tammy?
I know Becky. I'm very excited to vote for her.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other comments? Um, Ugana?
I know Becky as well. Becky was a fantastic member of this Board, and she led fearlessly. She was an amazing advocate for communities and for this district and for this Board as well, and I'm happy to cast my vote for Becky Timchuck.
Susan?
I'm going to always echo about Becky. I think Becky is such a strong leader and appreciate her advocacy, and her advocacy at the state level is very needed, so I also echo that.
Okay, thank you. See, no more comments right now. We'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor approving, are, giving our Board support to Becky Timcheck for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee position sixteen, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Then we're going on to the third one, which is Rural Caucus, Resolution One, Creation of the Rural Caucus. Is there a motion regarding OSBA Resolution One to create a Rural Caucus? Oh, do I turn on your mic?
I'm going to move that the Board support OSBA Resolution, I'm a little confused by the option there, but to be honest with you, Carrie, because we can vote to.
The Board can vote to support, to oppose, or to abstain.
So, um, you can open, you can open with whatever you want to do.
Oh, I see, I could.
So you could either support, I move, you could move the Board to support or oppose, and then if somebody else has a different opinion, wants to change that motion, then.
Actually, I'm going to put both words in there, so that, that's probably what you're suggesting, so I'm sorry for.
You got to pick one.
I have to pick one, okay.
And we can have somebody else do it too.
I'm just being dyslexic or something, I'm sorry for saying that. Okay, I move that the Board support OSBA Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So I have a.
Oh, Tammy, Justice, and Susan, or do you want to start?
I mean, I have a comment, and I don't mean to be the one that hugs the mic here, so I apologize. So my concern is to have so many different, so I, you know, again, I was like confused about the wording here, different caucuses on the OSBA, you know, for the Board and for the Legislative Committee also then confuses what the advocacy that our state OSBA Board is actually doing for education. So, I mean, that's my concern about creating this Rural Caucus is diluting the power that OSBA has at the state for funding.
Okay, thank you. We'll go, Tammy, Justice, Sunita?
Yeah, Susan, I'm sure you know this more than I do, but at the most, the OSBA events that I've attended so far, I guess my concern is that there are already, by sheer number, more rural districts. So it seems, and again, this might be a naive understanding of it, but that, that rural districts already have a larger say at the OSBA. And to elevate, you know, an additional person to the Executive Committee that represents the already overwhelming majority of districts, doesn't seem like it's, it's, it's the right direction, you know, where, where further, you know, silencing voices maybe from the larger districts. Again, you know, the fact that, you know, huge Beaverton School District will send one vote, you know, for everything that we're doing here tonight, it, it doesn't seem equitable. So that's just, again, it's, it's potentially a naive understanding of how things work, but that's just from an outsider looking in. I just wonder if that makes sense.
Justice, and then Sunita?
Thank you. I have a similar concern around where this fits. I'm also being new to the Board, new to OSBA as an entity and what it does. I'm not also to, I'm not sure how much my concern is a concern I need to be concerned about, if that makes sense. Due to that, I, I just, I just wanted to be stated, my overall concern is something like this as a caucus not being used to elevate the, the presence and the voices of especially some of our communities. And I do work in my day work where I move around other parts of the state, so I understand that there are structural differences and structural needs. I have trepidation, but I'm willing to move forward in good faith to see if this is, you know, created, you know, in the interest of building up stronger communication or education in our state. But I have reservations, and I feel like I need to say that.
Uh, Sunita?
Yeah, I, I, I am more with Justice on this. I think, so as far as I know, we only have one color caucus right now, and this is, would be the second one. And being a member of the color caucus, what has it done for me? When I think about it, it does have some positives. And because there are a lot of rural districts, but they are so far apart, when you talk to them, they are, they have problems, and it could be systemic problem. But I'm hoping that creating a color caucus would help them have better communication and.
A rural caucus, you mean?
Rural caucus, sorry. Rural caucus, what did I say?
Color caucus.
Rural caucus would help them have better communication and benefit the students at large. So with reservation, I'm willing to move forward and hoping that it would help students.
I think Susan, I mean Melissa, Susan, and then Tammy.
I too had similar reservations, and I spoke with somebody who's on the OSBA Board, who's a colleague of ours in a neighboring school district, and she had some insights that put some of my reservation at ease. So I, I weighed into this vote with a, a little less reservation than I started, but still not, I'm curious. Maybe I'm at more, less reservation, just lots of curiosity at this point.
Susan and then Tammy.
So I have been on the OSBA Board and recently left the OSBA Board, just, you know, in terms of that, and so I've been part of many of the meetings there. And I would echo what Tammy said, that actually, um, it's, it's, I mean, it really is complicated, and we are an interesting state because we have this large, you know, I five corridor that has three large school districts in it. At the same time, we have these very small rural districts that do have an outsized way because there's so many of them, and they do have a voice at our state level. So, I mean, there's always this, I mean, it's like we have conflicts, no matter where we look at, in terms of, you know, what's needed for the rural districts is different than what's needed for a district, you know, that's more urban or suburban like ours is. So it does kind of create this friction, but I think that friction will be also echoed, you know, as we're advocating at the state level, and there'll be mixed messages that will be presented to the state, you know? But again, that's, you know, it's been going on for years. It's whether there's a, I mean, whether there's a caucus or not, there's still, there's still things on the legislative, you know, policy that are advocating for what's for rural schools and what's for urban schools, it's on their list because they're representing the whole state.
Tammy?
So I appreciate that the rural caucus, or the rural districts probably need a better way to communicate. And, and one way that could happen is with, you know, them getting together. I'm going to call it a caucus, you could call it a club, whatever. So a way for them to, to come together and communicate, share ideas, share struggles, and giving that body an extra seat at the table does take away from the voice of the others at the table. And if we're comparing it to the color caucus, I mean, we all know that Oregon's a pretty white state and that most of our districts are represented by white people. And, and by having a color caucus and elevating a member to represent at the Executive Board does more to balance the scales, in my mind. So, but I feel like having an additional person on the Board from a rural caucus, I'm not going to say it would, you know, reverse that or anything, but I don't think it would advance us balancing the scales of equity. So I guess that's where I see them differently. I do think that they very much need a place to work together to solve issues. I just don't know if that is a vote, a caucus that has a voting position on the executive work.
Thank you. We've gone around twice. I'm going to give some input, and then I'll call a vote on that motion of supporting the, the Resolution One. So from my perspective, I would be opposing the creation of the Rural Caucus myself for some of the reasons that you've all been naming. The color caucus, the point of the color caucus, and the point of having the color caucus have a seat at the table and in that vote that you were naming, was very purposeful because we are the minority. And so bringing that voice forward was very intentional when the color caucus was created. And in my mind, this is, the rural, when they explained to us at the, at the OSBA Roadshow, why, the why, the main why that I heard was that the legislative team needed to bring people together quickly to get information from the rural districts in order to, when, when legislation changed quickly. To me, that is a systems issue, that they need a system to do that. And giving them an extra seat at the, at the table when they are the majority does not make sense to me as a good systems, I, I think in systems and systems change. Another thing that we heard at the Roadshow was that most even large districts, I don't think we would be in that category, have rural schools within their boundaries. So like Hillsborough has a bunch of rural schools within their boundary. So even Hillsborough would get a seat at the table in this rural caucus because they would qualify due to one of their, a few, some of their schools. So in the end, we end up bringing the majority into more majority. And so it seems like there is a systems issue, that they need a way to get information quickly from rural districts. And to me, this is not the way to give them an extra, another seat, but that they have an issue, yes. So I would move us to vote. At this time, I would be opposing that vote, but I will move, it's a Board vote, so it's not a Karen vote. But is there a motion? The motion on the table is to support, so is there? That's okay. So we will move on that motion that's at the table. We can vote on that first. If somebody wants to change it after that, then if the majority votes against it, to support.
Just to be clear, if the Board votes yes to support, then that would be expected to be the Board's vote going forward unless there were an immediate motion to reconsider within this meeting. If the Board does not support, does not vote in a majority for the motion to support this resolution, then somebody could make a motion to oppose or abstain from voting. And if none of those resolutions pass, then the Board will simply take no action on this item.
Great, good, thank you. Makes sense? Oh, Ugana? Or actually, let me call the vote, and then we can have more conversation if we need to. The motion on table, so we will now take a vote. All those in favor of supporting OSBA Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Member Caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee, all those in favor of supporting, raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So two, um, all those opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
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 Four say no. And then if anyone didn't, anyone abstaining, please raise your hand and say abstain. So right now, we have, it did, it did not pass to support. We have two in favor, four against, and one abstained. So I guess now we vote to oppose, or we just didn't pass? Right, okay. Does, do I hear a motion? I guess, is there a motion? Does somebody want to put out a motion?
Okay. I move the Board oppose OSBA Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee.
Do I hear a second? I second. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the motion that's on the table to oppose the OSBA Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus? Ugana?
Based on the information that, majority of the information that has been shared by my fellow Board members, it appears to me that there is no concrete, I, I am not persuaded that having a rural caucus helps us in any way. And I, I don't necessarily have enough information regarding the why for this caucus. And for that reason, I like to vote with persuasion. I am not persuaded tonight to vote for or against. So I'm not, I'm neither against it, nor am I for it. And that's why I'm abstaining from voting tonight. I vote with persuasion, I vote with conviction, and tonight I don't have neither a conviction to vote or the persuasion to do so, to vote for or against it. So I am abstaining tonight. Thank you.
Just a clarifying point, not to belabor this, but at some point, the Board could just abstain to vote as well. If that motion to oppose does not pass, then a third vote, a third, I'm just putting it out there, right?
There really, just to complicate matters further, there really are four options. The Board can vote to support this resolution, the Board can, Board can vote to say no, oppose this resolution, the Board can vote to abstain, and if none of those pass, what we will submit to OSBA is that the Board took no action.
Okay, thank you. To get to no action, do we have to go through all those three? Or we can just say no action?
Or if nobody makes a motion to do anything further, then the Board would simply not take action.
Okay, thank you. Susan, who else had a question?
Yeah, I just don't understand what that means. I don't, sorry, I don't understand what no action means in terms of to OSBA. Does that mean that we just didn't have a vote?
And I wonder, I do have, I'm curious as to how, because we've already agreed that we're not going to support it. And I wonder then, the benefits of an abstaining or a no action. And I, I, I'm leaning more, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this now, but I would consider those options as a way of, we're not going to encourage it as our board vote, but the other reality is that it's going to get passed because there's so many rural communities. So it's going to be passed. And so would a no action reduce the angst that's already kind of, that simmering angst that's already there? Is that better? Because I don't see any of us being really angry or upset, maybe a little bit, because it is hurtful that some of the voices are being elevated over others. And I understand that too. So I'm just curious as the politics and what that might look like and what that says to our colleagues throughout the state.
So we have Tammy, Sunita, myself, and then Susan again. And then we'll call a vote for that.
And I think, I hear what you're saying and I actually appreciate that view. And, you know, we, we're elected to represent the Beaverton School District community. And what are we saying to them if we abstain versus say, no, we think that having Beaverton as one of the largest, larger school districts in the state have, I, I, I'm not going, I don't want to take a vote to diminish the voice of the Beaverton School District and its community by abstaining, even though it's probably, it's very likely to pass. I would like the people I represent to know that I was, I took a vote for equity and that I was going to, and I don't, I don't think that it's going to cause friction. I think they probably understand why we would vote against it. We're representing the interests of our district, of our community. And so for me, it feels important to be on the record to say, no, we don't think we should add to the inequity that already exists in this association. So I'm personally going to take a vote to say, no, I don't support increasing inequity. That has, I hope, no reflection on how I feel about the rural communities and their districts and their needs. And again, a systems issue that could solve this versus elevating, and I keep forgetting because Susan, you've said it twice now, but it's a legislative body as well as the executive. So that's two positions. And, you know, to me, it feels like I am not standing up for the community that I've been elected to stand up for.
Justice?
I mean, only comment that I have is, even as I was speaking earlier, on my willingness and actually I moved once I voted, but my consideration is I'm just not convinced that this is a necessary entity. You know, as a policy concept, it's a proactive decision to add it and the case has not been clear to me. And so therefore, I would, I mean, I guess once we go to vote on this motion, I would still be in the camp of that voting no as a board would be where I would want to be.
Sunita and then myself and then Susan. And then we'll vote.
So I'm hearing more and more about it. I was in the roadshow too, and I know that there are more rural communities, listening to my fellow board members. Do you know how many large districts have rural communities so they get extra vote to, no, to be known? Hillsborough being one.
I just know that in the roadshow, that's what was said, so. Well, and I, and I, that was from the conversation, not that it was stated by OSBA people, like it was by.
Yeah, I know, Erica.
Uh, no, the.
I think that would also be kind of rural and urban as well, so.
But we'll let Sunita finish and then.
Yeah. So that's, that's fine. I was just asking that question. That's okay.
Okay. And I, for myself, I don't see the need for a rural caucus. I see the need for some kind of organizing of rural communities to bring about the information they need quickly to the legislative groups and to, but to add another vote. So I, I'm a clear no. It's not a, I'm wavering or I think we should. So I'm a clear no. But Ugana? And then we'll take a vote. I think that's everybody's.
Carrie, does this reflect, is there any reflection on us, on this school board in however we vote tonight? Is there anywhere that it reflects, does it portray us in bad light if we vote against this tonight?
I can speak to that, Lopez. It's, it's, you know, we don't know what the perception's going to be from a body of 23 representatives. So I think there's going to be a variety of perceptions, maybe from urban to rural. But I think it does make a statement when people abstain versus a direct no or a direct yes. Because to me, an abstain is a no. So to me, as a superintendent, if it's because it's, you didn't get votes, so. But I don't know what the perception's going to be for a body that represents you as a board, because this is your body. This is your state body. So I, and I think there are going to be a variety of feelings probably, I'm assuming, from people. Just like you would have when you get representatives from across the state. It's like when you go to Salem, when you go lobby, you get different senses from people depending on the topic.
Well, in this situation, I'm going to lean on my fellow board members who are much more enlightened on this issue to cast their vote. I stand on my vote. I will not be voting on this because I like to vote for or against with persuasion and conviction. And tonight I have neither on any which way. I'm not convinced to vote for it. I'm not convinced to vote against it. So I am abstaining and I'll be leaning on the rest of the board members tonight to carry this vote through. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm appreciating on so many levels our different perspectives. And I really, I think that goes back to the strength of us as a board is being able to have these conversations because we're wading into conversations that are really, they're sensitive for lots of reasons. And I appreciate the authenticity that everybody's able to come and just appreciate that we're bringing different perspectives. And I do remember at the roadshow that they said something about, and so for those of you who were there, there was some mention about, in order to have this vote now, they had to go through the new bylaws to be able to create the different, like you have to have a certain amount of interest, you have to go through different information, there's different steps to be able to get to this point. So is this a vote of, did you follow the procedures to get to this point? Or is this a, an ideological? In my head, there was kind of, so I'm wondering if the feedback that I got from the other board member from our neighboring, if she was saying they followed all, I can't, I don't know if she was saying vote for it because they followed all the steps procedurally, they were clean. Or, so now I don't, I don't know which way, anyway. So Carrie, I don't know if you have insights or those who were at the roadshow, if you have insights onto which way this vote would most.
I think that they, this is not about the procedure. This is about voting where they're philosophically, we think that this is, and I don't know if it's philosophical, but from the information, we had the roadshow to get information, OSBA sent us information to our board emails. There were, there were like a ton of stuff to read on this that explained all the different pieces. It's in our board packet. So we had a ton of information to read and then we had time to reach out to people to ask questions. I mean, it's been a while since the roadshow and that was like a couple of months ago. So to your question, this is not about did they follow the steps. They wouldn't have been here if they didn't follow steps. And I really want to call a vote on this. Okay.
Amen, because.
Go ahead, Susan.
Sorry, sorry for that, Karen, because I know you want to make a vote on this. But, you know, and I'm not tainting where my perspective, but I do want to point out that I think a lot of the rural districts feel that their voices aren't being heard. And so that's where this is coming from.
Okay. So we're calling a vote. And then part of it is, it's okay to vote how you feel, like what you're, I mean, that's the whole point, right? So on table, we have the motion, all, and we'll go through yes, no, and abstain. So all in favor of approving the motion, to move the board, the law, all, the motion on the table is that the board will oppose the OSBA Resolution Two to adopt the proposed amendments. Oh, wait, shoot, I read the wrong one. The board moves to oppose the OSBA Resolution One to create the Oregon Rural School Board Members Caucus as designated and a designated seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee. All those were, the board, those that think the board should oppose this, all in favor of opposing, please raise your hand and say yes, we oppose.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have four in oppose. All those opposing, to oppose, please raise your hand and say no. No. Okay. So two say no to opposing. Anyone abstaining, please raise your hand and say abstain. Okay. So that means that this does not pass. Four board members voted to oppose, I mean, voted in favor of opposing the creation of the rural caucus. Two board members voted in favor, against opposing the formation of the rural caucus and one board member abstained from voting. So at this time, this does not pass. Sorry, the motion to oppose passes. Four votes to two that oppose and one that abstained. We're moving to the next part and that is OSBA Resolution Two that amends bylaws. So do I hear a motion to either support or oppose the amended bylaws?
I move that the board support OSBA Resolution Two to adopt the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws.
Is there a second? A second. And you were, it's a support. Okay. So any questions or comments? I have one question. In the bylaws, it actually read that they were, gosh, I don't, it's a big packet and I can't find it, but that they were actually writing that we're approving the rural caucus.
The, the language of the bylaws amendments includes.
Thank you. So that's, I don't know how to vote on this because if the bylaws are trying to get us to vote on, already say that they're approving the rural caucus. I don't understand.
I, I'm wondering if.
Susan?
Sorry, Karen. I'm wondering if we can go back to the OSBA board and ask some clarifying questions because, Carrie, you did that.
You did.
No, no, on the bylaws.
So the language of the bylaws amendments include both changing some language that had been specific to the caucus of board members of color and making it just about caucuses so that it would apply more generally. And there are a couple of specific places in the bylaws amendments that spell out by doing this, this creates the caucus of rural schools, rural school board members. I spoke with OSBA staff and they said, well, if it doesn't pass, you know, we think that those pieces wouldn't be implemented. It's not in the written materials that does sound to be the intention of the staff, but in writing, that is, the amendments do include elements about establishing the rural school, school board.
And I actually called Sammy and asked, or I didn't call, I wrote and asked the same question because I'm, I don't understand why, I don't understand if that's like some legalists, like legal talk or something or bylaw, the way you write things. Because they wrote, oh, it's like, oh, yeah, it's, if it, you know, it's dependent on whether it passes or not, but I didn't, I don't know law and that's not what it is said. I just read what the paper said. So I feel uncomfortable. I don't want to stop everything else in the bylaws from moving forward. I just feel uncomfortable because it was stated there and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what we're saying yes to.
So you spoke to staff, OSBA staff, not board.
Correct. I spoke to OSBA staff. I believe you spoke to a board member. I spoke with staff. And it was not explicit in the written materials, but the indication was that they expected that those pieces would not be put into writing. There isn't any language in there about it being contingent or triggered by the vote on Resolution One, but that was what was stated as the expectation.
My fear here, Carrie, is by voting on the amendment that we are stamping our approval on the rural caucus. So that's my fear. Is there a way that they would amend this? I don't know if we're, I'm comfortable voting on this particular amendment since it includes the piece regarding the caucus and it's creating the impression that this board approved it or voted for it. So that's where my fear is with this particular amendment.
I can read what I got back from Sammy, just to put it out there, or is that not? Go ahead.
To the option to abstain from this.
That would be an option. So the board has the option to vote to support, vote to oppose, vote to abstain, or take none of those actions and we'll just tell.
Does OSBA need this vote this month or can we wait till January?
We cannot wait until January. The voting period unfortunately closes December 15th, so there isn't time for an additional meeting.
So, I honestly don't know how to vote because I don't want to vote for something that's going to move the rural caucus forward if it's not what we are choosing. But it says, Karen, the rural caucus language in Resolution Two is dependent upon Resolution One. Resolution One is a formal approval of rural caucus as it is a resolution by the OSBA board submitted to the membership to adopt the addition of the caucus and formalizes the corresponding change in the governance, board, or directors. Through the amendment process, as per bylaw 4.43, which stipulates that the OSBA board submit the resolution, voting on this resolution establishes the caucus through the amendment process. Resolution Two amends bylaws to reflect the formal addition of the caucus occurring via Resolution One in addition to the other proposed amendment, which to me doesn't, I don't know what that means. And I, and then I, I said, it's, I said, it seems a little presumptuous that we would vote that way, but, yeah.
So we take a vote on this and if, and if it passes, great, but if it, if everybody says no to this, then can we, we can then go abstain from this particular vote? So the message would be consistent, like we don't want to have the, you know, rural caucus.
I'm not sure. So you're saying if we vote, if we as a board vote to oppose amendments?
Right. And then we can go back and make a motion to abstain from, or can we just abstain?
So we have a motion on the table to support the Resolution Two. So either the board could take a vote and if the board does not have a majority supported, we could move on and a board member could make a motion to abstain. Or a board member could make and propose an amendment to change to abstain.
So I would say, well, let's take a vote, what's on, what's on the table to support. And I would move to, if anybody would like to just vote to abstain, and I feel more comfortable abstaining and not stopping every other piece of their work, but I feel I would vote against just because of the way it's written, so.
Right. So you've got a vote, a motion on the table to support, so we can either vote on that or make an amendment to that.
Do you want to make an amendment or do you want to?
I don't.
We have to vote first. Okay. So all in favor of approving the bylaws, OSBA Resolution Two to adopt the proposed amendments of the bylaws, please raise your hand and say yes if you approve the OSBA Resolution Two to adopt the bylaws. Raise your hand and say yes. All those opposed, raise your hand and say no.
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 Okay. So that's no, no. Four, five, six say no. All those abstaining, please raise your hands to abstain. Okay. So it does not, we are not in favor of passing, adopting the OSBA Resolution Two OSBA bylaws. Do we have a motion to abstain?
So I move that the board abstain. So I move that the board abstain from OSBA resolution one to create the.
Two.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the, I'm saying, I move to abstain OSBA regula, resolution two to adopt the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws.
I second. Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay. So, um, we'll take a vote. All in favor of abstaining, um, for our board to abstain on the OSBA resolution two to adopt the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 That passes unanimously, seven votes. Thank you to the staff. Thank you. Staff will submit the votes we decided to the OSBA, to OSBA. Um, our final item on action, action, our final item for action in this meeting is approval of the board policy revisions we discussed in our last meeting. IGBHA, alternative education programs, IGDJ, interscholastic athletic and activities and IK academic achievement. Um, the district general counsel, Camellia, is and chief of staff Carrie are available for any questions before we take a vote on approval. Any questions? Okay. Um, so can I have, can I have a motion to approve the revised, the revisions to the board policies? IGBHA, IGDJ and IK?
I make a motion to approve?
Thank you. Um, the motion's on the table to approve IGBHA, alternative education programs, revision to policy, IGDJ, interscholastic athletic and activities, um, and IK academic achievement. Um, well now, any discussion, I said, oh, oh, sorry. Thank you for seconding. Um, thank you for seconding. Now we'll take a vote or discussion, any discussion. Now we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the policies that were just named, three policies, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, we will now move to our items for future action. Tonight we have just one item, some proposed revisions to board policies, which Camellia and Carrie will provide information about. So we'll hand it over to them.
Thank you Chair Perez. Um, tonight we have for you three policies that, um, we are proposing changes to. Uh, the first policy is policy BBF. This is board member standards of conduct. Um, the change that you'll see reflected in there is, um, that board members are, have been designated as mandatory reporters, um, as of Senate Bill four fifteen that was passed in 2019. So it just adds that language to your standards of conduct.
Any questions on that one?
Okay.
Go ahead.
The next one that we are bringing forward is board policy BDDH, um, public comment at board meetings. Um, there's some cleanup in here that, um, Carrie Delf worked on to align this language to what we're actually doing, um, at our board meetings around some of these topics as well as adding some language, um, related to House Bill twenty six, excuse me, twenty five sixty that was passed in 2021 regarding, uh, making, um, the public comment available to those who attend online, I believe, as well as, um, in like the written comment and our other processes.
Any questions or comments on that?
Okay. And the last policy that we are bringing forward this month is policy KBA around public records requests. Um, this, uh, most of the language in here, this is a highly recommended policy, so there's not really any legislative or legal change, but it's just aligning, uh, better language to, um, to the practice of what we're doing, um, and making some cleanup, uh, to this policy to make it more clear.
Comments, questions? Um, so I don't hear any questions, so that means thank you for your time and we will vote on approval at our next meeting on January thirty, thirtieth. That was our final topic and the last thing on the agenda is comments and committee reports from board members. Who would like to go first? Melissa?
I just want to again thank the, um, fellow board members, uh, we have, uh, we're going to be presented with complicated topics and I think, I think for the OSBA it's low intensity, I hope. Um, but I think it's good practice for us to model having dialogue on behalf of our community and, um, I really am grateful for everybody's perspective and happy that the vote came out the way it did. And, um, I think, anyway, I just, I'm grateful for all of everybody's participation and then, um, so thank you.
Anybody, Justice?
Uh, I wanted to highlight just we, we, as a school district and as a school board, we exist in a community that has a rich body of knowledge, um, in events that occur in our community that inform, uh, what happens, not just with us as board members, but also what's happening with our families and things that maybe, um, matter in the history and lives of our community members. And in the last week, uh, one of our local organizations, Central Cultural brought, uh, Charles Kamisaki to do a book signing and speak about immigration reform, but specifically around, um, the changes in the eighties that a lot of the families in our district, um, have firsthand experience with and are a very significant part of their, their journey here. Um, first and second generation families, current families, um, our, our, our new families that are coming now. And I think, um, moving that discussion maybe away from a political space, but from a what's happening with people, um, how well we understand the pathways that others, um, have traveled. And, um, and I wanted to share as one who attended on the invitation of a community member, um, I guess in another local elected who also works as Central Cultural and having, um, the first hand, the first time I had the opportunity to not experience those events from my memory as a child in the early, in the mid eighties and hearing about some of those policy changes and what that meant to families, but hearing, um, local stories about what those changes meant to folks that live right here and parents and kids that are in our district. I thought it was really important one to elevate when our local organizations create space to come and learn that we should make our best attempt to attend, um, but also to elevate that these things are, um, it's important to all of us to not think about some of the, the complicated issues we have in our society as something that are, um, just the realm of politics, but are actually the realm of how do people persist and what's the world that we want to live in. So I want to thank Central Cultural for bringing, uh, Charles Kamisaki here to speak, um, and creating the space for even someone like me who, who knows some things and read some stuff and hung out with, been in a lot of spaces, but you know, we all have space to grow and learn and, um, hopefully the, to center when we're talking about immigration and movement of our families, that it is, um, it's, it's really, really important and we can all do our best. And, and many of these events happened right here in our county. They weren't, um, distant, uh, things that happened someplace else. They actually happened right here in Washington County and I think it's, and in this district. And I think it's important that we highlight that or aware of that if folks were not. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to share that and thank you all.
Sammy and then Sunita?
So I have been to, um, two dramatic productions at Acma. I saw Footloose the musical a couple of months ago, being an eighties girl, it was really fun to see that. Um, and last weekend I saw, um, the Scottish play as interpreted by sixth graders. It was amazing. So, um, just really appreciate the, the hard work all these students do and I get to see some of the end product of it. It was really fun.
Thank you. Sunita and then Susan.
Yeah. I wanted to thank all of our board members for the time that they're putting in, Dr. Balderas, the staff, Lindsay, Christie for your time and, and your experiences that you bring forward to us that what teachers are facing. So I thank you all for that. And this is our last meeting for 2023. I wanted to wish you all happy holidays and rest and, um, so thank you everybody for your time, all of you for being here. Thanks.
Um, did you want?
A quick, um, I want to thank Justice for bringing up, um, the history of Beaverton and Washington County, because I think it's really important to look at our history, um, and I, and work on not repeating that in the future. And I do worry about things that we see at the national level that can impact our students here. So I really appreciate your comments and of course I echo, um, what, uh, you know, amazing year and kind of crazy year 2023 has been, but I look forward to 2024 being, uh, more positive.
Ugana?
I did realize this was the last meeting for the year, so I just want to say happy holidays and see you next year.
Um, and I'll just close with, um, something I'm holding in my heart is that I know that this year we didn't have the food carts that, um, were needed to give families that were in need and I, I, I didn't know, we didn't, did we get enough of the ones that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a great update.
I was just writing the update for your, uh, board, um, packet for the weekend. Let me just pull up so I have the accurate numbers. I'm sorry. Um, we did get a last minute, um, donation from our friends at THPRD. Um, so they collected more cards than we had anticipated. So it turns out that we were able to provide 1,074 cards, $30 grocery gift cards to families who needed that supplemental food support. So that covered the students who are identified by their counselors who go to schools that did not have any other sort of community support. What it didn't cover is 1,456 students who are also identified by their counselors, but they attend schools that are getting some sort of, um, support from either, um, PTOs, PTCs or community partners, um, or leadership groups around the district. So the story here is that no one's going with, without anything. So that's, that's the good news.
Okay. That's good to know. I know that we had a school I was working with that was a hundred cards short. Um, so I was putting out to friends to see if we could get some donations for that school to get them. And I think, I don't know what we got to, but we didn't get to a hundred there. So I think there might be some pockets of schools that even though they, um, have some supports, probably not enough for what's the need is. So one, one question I had was do we, we don't have food service during those two weeks because our staff is off, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, I guess I'm just putting that out, um, that we don't serve food to families for two weeks and I know that some of our families really depend on that. And even with a, a food card, I, I think that the food cards or a gift card is really powerful because it allows families to choose what they want to get instead of just a food box, even though food boxes are also amazing. Um, but I just wanted to hold them in our thoughts and if there's ways to support in your local area or neighborhoods, um, thinking about that. But thank you to the staff and, and everybody for all their work, um, looking, I know that the boss said that you all get at least the last week off, right? Is that right?
Some.
Some people. Okay. Except for the ones that don't. So for all those that do, um, thank you to our teachers, get a little break and our administrators. So good night. Oh, wait, I gotta do the official shoot. Okay. Oops, I almost closed my thing. Um, with no other agenda items, the December 12th business meeting of the Beaverton School Board is adjourned at nine thirty-three.